Commission.
Sorry.
At seven thirty one P M. And so first do the. A roll call. In another right area here. So, Nura Mathur. Don't see him. Position two, Steve Smith.
Here.
Position three, Andre Testman.
Here.
Position four, Daryl Lambert. I see you, Daryl.
Here.
Yeah. And I'm in position five, Luke Maruziak. Position six, Chris Alef.
Alef here.
Alef, Alef, I will get that right, I swear.
No worries.
Thank you, Chris. And then position seven, David Goodman.
Here.
And then I see we have. The council liaison commissioner, I'm sorry, council member Johnson here as well. Okay, and so with that roll call complete. And I also note that Mike Sarwine here as well.
Good evening.
Hello. I'd like to amend the agenda before a question approval of it. We have a an agenda item of election of chair and vice chair. Since we did that last month, I recommend we amend the agenda to remove that item. So moved. And do it. There you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Okay, agenda is approved. Now we move on to public comments. Any members of the public wish to make comments that are not on the agenda? Going once. Okay, then, at that point. We'll move into the council liaison report.
All right, greetings, folks. I've been having some connection problems, so. Commissioner Maruziak feel free to stop me if I'm cutting out too much.
Okay.
All right. I, excuse me, only have two items that I want to inform the commission of. The first is the Snoqualmie River Revetment Repair Project. So this took place where River Street meets Park Avenue. And what happened is that all along that side of the bank, there'd been a tremendous amount of erosion, still is a tremendous amount of erosion. But in that particular area, we were able to complete a revetment project, which essentially. Put a stop to the erosion that was threatening that street, some of the utilities in the area, and even potentially some homes a little down the road. So that was more or less completed. They're still doing a little bit of landscaping. But yeah, it's pretty neat that you can go down and check it out. They're going to, I believe, put in some railing or something, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, to keep people from potentially wandering into places where they shouldn't be going. The river is more dangerous than it looks, as I'm sure that you are all aware. The other thing I want to mention is that the council approved a mutual aid and assistance agreement for the Washington Interstate Water slash Wastewater Agency Response Network, or WAWORN, Washington worn. This program streamlines the process for receiving aid during a utility-related crisis by allowing member agencies, like other cities or even private companies, to share resources like equipment and skilled personnel more directly than would be otherwise required. And that allows therefore to, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that they don't, the city doesn't need to have a declaration of the emergency to activate this program. The scale of the emergency can range anywhere from a water main break to natural disasters, which of course, at some point, we would probably have a federal aid, but for all those things in between or while we're waiting, we can activate the system. And I just think that this program will make some all me even more ready for unforeseen crises that could come in the future. So those are the only two items that I want to let the planning commission know about. I'd be happy to field any questions and then probably deflect them to. To Jason.
Okay, does anybody actually like to note that Commissioner Nooraj Mathur is here? Welcome. Does anybody have any questions for Councilmember Johnson?
Good question, just so I can get educated. So how is, how are things activated under WAWORN? Like, what does that situation look like? We pick up the phone and say, hey, water mean broke. Can we borrow your water truck? Like.
I think that's in perhaps Mr. Sarwine also might know more about this specifically, but my understanding is that that it is a system that allows us to connect to a network and request aid. And then those agencies that have the resources and could provide them in a reasonable amount of time and without, you know, any without losing too much of their own resources that they can send that aid in whatever way is needed. Yeah. Thanks. Yeah.
Okay. You have any questions for Councilmember Johnson?
One other thing on that, we are not required to respond if we do not have the resources available. Yeah, there's no requirement for our city to respond or for any other city or agency to respond. It's just that it allows for the process to be streamlined for those that do wish to respond.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Wait a minute, Jason?
Yeah.
So thanks, Chair. I did want to highlight, if anybody's interested, there in the last council packet, there is an agenda build that has a link to a YouTube video that shows the revetment project. It's a pretty nice video. I could play it now if anybody's interested, or else you can just go look it up and view it yourself at your. When the time works for you.
Yep. Yeah, it's a really nice video.
Okay.
Or you could come down here and walk the projects. That is also an option.
Yeah, you can't fly without the drone.
The video is nice because it actually shows the project in various stages of construction, so definitely you should all go check it out. We highly encourage that. It's a very neat project.
Do you have the video queued up, Jason?
Yeah. I do. Get it on here and I gotta make a setting adjustment, optimize the video. Okay. Do that.
Nice video.
That's really nice.
Yeah. Thank you.
We thank everybody for their accommodations during construction of the project. The impacts were not quite what we anticipated, but we're glad it's done.
No, it looks good. Looks good. Okay. One last time, anything else for customer Johnson? All right. Thank you. And then we'll move on to approval of planning commission meeting minutes. First, we'll start with December sixth, twenty twenty one. Can I have a motion to approve? Proof? Motion proof?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
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 The meetings of December sixth are approved. And now I'd like to get the approval of planning commission meeting minutes, January eighteenth, twenty twenty two, last month. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Minutes of January eighteenth, twenty twenty two are approved. Okay, at this point. The next agenda item is a downtown relook. It'd be a brilliant update for the commissioners, really.
Excuse me, Chair, we actually have a designer review board item up first.
I see something.
At the bottom of the first page of the agenda.
Oh, you're right. You're right. My mistake. Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, D R B twenty two dash zero zero three Snoqualmie Trading Company signage with a recommend action to approve with conditions. So go ahead.
Okay. Can everyone see this screen share?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Ed.
So we've reviewed some signage before, so I won't necessarily walk us all the way through one of these documents, the staff reports, but I'll take you to the pictures instead, just to kind of help you out. So this is a replacement signage for the former business that was located at this location, which was the Flying Frog Antiques and Collectibles. It's located in downtown eighty one twelve on Railroad Avenue, kind of more or less in the middle of the block there, specifically in a building called the Fury Block, if you want to get into the historical building names. The new tenant is Snoqualmie Trading Company, and they would like to replace the signage with like signage from what was there before. So I'll scroll down here. It's a material is just like the previous historic design review. It's a composite material that we see more and more as it's resistant to sun fading and rust and degradation, like natural wood would be, especially if it's exposed in a facade like this. So it's a, it's like an aluminum composite with a acrylic spacer for the lettering, so it stands off a bit to create a bit of depth. We see it more and more. The sign is within the size allowance for the city's historic district, which is a twenty square foot sign. This one's nineteen six. It is intended to look like wood, but you heard me say it's a, it's not. It's a composite. However, if you're walking on the street, this is the blade sign that you would be walking near, which is actually made of wood. And I'm not sure what, if I can remember what this is called exactly, but essentially like a laser etching under the wood, but this is underneath the awning. So you would see far less degradation from the sun, things of that nature, so. And if you have any questions, I believe, and I don't want to speak out of turn here, but I believe Heather Dean is in the attendees list. If so, if you have any questions for her and the business and general curiosities about that, just I'm sure she'd be happy to come in and speak about it. Otherwise, I can take any questions about the sign.
Are there any questions?
Not a question, just a statement. Heather, thanks for investing in our community.
Also, not a question, but the sign looks really slick.
Good.
At least it doesn't look like brushed aluminum.
Agreed, agreed.
I brought Heather in so she can, I think she wanted to. Say something.
There I am. Okay. Hi, guys. So first of all, I just want to say thank you for taking time to do a sign review for us. This is a really big deal for us, and we worked really hard on this design and hope that it really complements the downtown kind of historical nature that we're going for. And I would invite you all to stop in and see us, but we really take pride in what we're doing, and I can tell you right now that if that sign, even because of a fraction of a bit of a fade to it, which I don't anticipate, there will be a brand new sign, because we really want to invest in kind of what we're doing here and have downtown continue to recover. So that's what we're up to, and I appreciate your time.
Excellent. Thank you, Heather. So, good. Can I get a motion to approve D R B two two dash zero 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 three Snoqualmie Trading Company signage?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Signage is approved. Congratulations, Heather.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. My business partners will be equally thrilled.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you. Okay. Good. Now, down to the downtown relook discussion.
Okay, so that is me again. I will go ahead and get ready. You guys are moving quick, so I didn't have the time to pull up my next document set. Okay. So for those of you who are new, the downtown relook is a, an effort by, well, at this point, it's an effort by city council, community development committee, and the planning commission to identify areas in which the downtown can be approved by modifications to code language and to kind of find opportunities for betterment in the community. And so in doing so, the planning commission created a list of recommendations to council. Fifteen recommendations. This is, I should also preface, this has been going on for quite a while, and I am going to mess up the dates if I try to tell you that this part happened on the fourth of November in twenty nineteen, but I'll kind of just give you the outline in general, and then I'll work us through to where we are now. So sorry to move us in time there. But the planning commission recommended fifteen different types of changes based on other cities' codes and concepts that they believed would improve the historic downtown. And so they recommended this code section, and at the time, the city committee suggested that they narrow it down to a more quick turnaround, high, high value target, so to speak, and select a more narrow or tapered list and focus on just a few elements. And come back to them. So that happened in twenty twenty. I really said I wasn't going to do this, but here I am. It's a more focused element list, and so we're going to see that here in a minute, and I'll take you over to those elements. We'll walk through them. But essentially, it's a much more focused on streetscape amenities, as well as some connections to other documents the city has produced, the downtown historic plan, vision plan, and the master plan. So two big documents the city has that reflect kind of like goals and dreams, so to speak, of historic district such as ours. And there was, you know, a desire to see more connections to that. And in addition, in the process, some opportunities for some. What I don't know, it's my words here, to thicken, so to speak, some of the details around the Falls Avenue and how it interfaces with the historic district, what's called out. So for many of you who don't walk into another roads, Falls Avenue is right behind Railroad Avenue. If you're at Snoqualmie Brewery, that is Falls Avenue. So how does that road, the backside of it specifically, interface as a potential for frontage rather than what it is now? So in doing so, to get to, you know, from that point, we have council saying, you know, go back, iron out these, this code language, and then come to us, and we will more officially adopt that code language. They're obviously going to review it and talk about it and make changes potentially themselves. But we were at the process where we were reviewing code language. And did I just switch to Word for you all? Or is it still the same document?
It's on the next steps is what we're staring at.
Okay. So how about now?
Now we see word.
Okay. So as I mentioned, we have sections of code language, and we have other cities' code language to reference, but as you can imagine, it can get kind of complicated. And so in working through it, I created a worksheet, which is what this is here. In this document, I have a color keyed kind of way to help organize the thoughts as we work through the section. So what you'll see here is kind of like the first one we hit, where we would look at a code section here. This is what the existing Snoqualmie Municipal Code, S M C, is what it says. And the sense was that this was inadequate, doesn't achieve enough of, you know, what it could be. And so by being additive or modifying it, we can create a better code language that in the future, when a new development happens, the, that new development will have to follow these rules rather than the more simple rules, so to speak. So in here, you'll see blue is the kind of replacement language. And so there is a walkthrough where we were working, working through the details of, you know, what what type of project and how far would a sensible amount of streetscape amenities, which are essentially, you know, benches, I mean, it could be anything. There's a huge range of different cities that approaches differently, but if you look here, you'll see a lot of Shalan code. And Shalan's code calls out a lot of variety of streetscape amenities. So let's say a new business were to show up. I don't want to pick on Heather here, but I just said her dress. So let's say there the eighty one twelve building got redone completely, so much so that it called out and required streetscape amenities to be added in order for it to be brought up to, to be built up. In which case, we would go to this section, and we would identify different types of the streetscape amenities that they would have to add to the streetscape. So there's a whole bunch here, and you should take some time if you want to go over kind of what was added. I would say a humorous point was the removal of the decorative clocks. That was a. I left it in there as a joke, too, so. So for everyone to know that I'm very funny, so I guess I'm getting out there. Essentially, this is a list of the types of streetscape that we want to see more of as development occurs in the city. So yeah, take a look at that. And then the next section here, this is again, another, you can kind of think of this as the focuses. There's a focus on streetscape area, then there's a focus on site development. So I'm gonna scroll down to the section here. This is all related to screening and so trash receptacle screening. So think the backside on of the buildings that have Falls Avenue, they have trash receptacles back there. This would require additional screening type themes or structures. So I'll scroll down. We, and this is an example of kind of how we were working through and coming up with how to make a change. I would seek out other cities' code. In this case, looked at Shalan's code, Bellingham's code, Vancouver. Issaquah has more than one development standards for trash receptacles and screening and things like that. And so we spoke through all the concepts, what made the most sense for the seduction of call me and how to hold that language into our code. And then to, in theory, make the code be more representative of what we would want to see in the future, if that makes sense. So at the last meeting, this is one of the more recent reviews that we did. We just kind of walked through the different sections here, but kind of found that this, the Issaquah Central Plan reflected the most realistic connection to our current city's code language and how it's written, things like that, in addition to the kinds of things that are sought after to be added to the code. So the next step, in theory, for me would be to take this language and cut out all the parts about, you know, Issaquah or anything where it says a road name that is not relevant, or let's say this code reference, and actually turn it into what, what the Snoqualmies code would look like. And then I'll bring it back. You know, you can make sure I didn't do anything stupid, for instance, and make a, you know, grave error or neglected something or that you see that by me translating the code, I didn't adhere to the intent, that kind of thing. So that's the, that would be the next step. And so that's kind of where we are in a sense, but I want to show you one last one, which you could think of this as Focus Three. And Focus Three, we haven't really approached yet. Timing for me and timing as we work through this project has been, we haven't gotten here yet. The concepts here are, as I mentioned before, the downtown vision plan and the downtown master plan. The two documents the cities made, I think, one in two thousand and four and one more recently, two thousand and sixteen, fifteen. And they discuss ways in which the city can produce a better downtown look and feel for pedestrians or for cyclists and for development standards going forward and changes that would, you know, create more optimum experiences for everyone. They go into a whole wide range of different things. But the, there is a distinct lack of connection or teeth, so to speak, in those documents. They don't. There's not an opportunity for planning commission to say, this building or this structure, this design, this remodel, it's not connecting to this master plan or this vision plan in any appreciable way. There's no teeth for you all to say that, you know, this building is not reflective of the master plan. So the effort would be to pull in specifically the sections that embrace the Falls Avenue frontage concepts from those, the master plans and the vision plan, and bring them more directly into the code's purpose statement, which would allow planning commission to reflect on those aspects as well as the ones that are written in code directly. So it's just a way to, it's a tie, it's a string to bring along those ideas and bring them into the the conversation for planning historic design review. So that's a lot, and I understand, I tried to go quick. You guys are pretty sharp, so I want to leave it there for now and see if there's any questions about maybe the process, where we're at, where we're going, things like that, and then, yeah.
If I could just add a comment.
Yeah.
I think it behooves everybody to understand that the a lot of pride in the look of how Snoqualmie looks in historic downtown on railroad. And I believe it was Commissioner Goodman who opened up a Google Street View, and then we went through and looked at Falls Avenue, and we go, here's, you know, here's really the area that if we were to upgrade, really could use it, because you'll look at one place, you'll be looking at the back of dumpsters. Another place looks like it could be a ceded area. So the idea was keeping that in mind of when the opportunity for improvements would come up and how to set the right tone to improve the city. That's why I think Dylan brought up Falls Avenue three or four times. I mean, that's really a good way to think of what, what we would like this to apply to. Just acknowledging that the front, there's already been a lot of work on, on, you know, Railroad Avenue area. So. Jason, I see your hand up.
Not me.
Well, I see a hand. Oh, sorry, my cursor was over your face. Sorry, my bad.
It's okay.
All right. Any comments? Commissioner Testman?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, staff. Thank you, everyone, for, you know, definitely for the new commissioners. This is extremely helpful. My, just to make sure my understanding is clear, I'm assuming Dylan, you'll, you'll send out a copy of what we just reviewed. And, and since you're saying no action is taken per the agenda, we just need to go ahead and make sure we review that. I think we have a good, high-level understanding of what, what the desired vision is for Fall Street, so that's good. And then I guess, just to be clear, what, what subsequent action will be forthcoming? For Fall Street, so that's good. And then I guess, just to be clear, what, what subsequent action will be forthcoming from this?
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to answer that. So at the next meeting, I will essentially pick up where we left off. And we will review the last remaining corrections for that worksheet. So we will, I will bring about the Isqwa. Can't remember now what it's called. It's called something plan and I'm going to adopt or try to. Translate that language into Snowquami Municipal Code Looking Language and we'll go through it, make sure it's correct and reflects exactly what. Was the intent of that edit in the first place. Sometimes there's like word tweaks or moments for adding things that is, are valuable. That's where I want to grab your feedback and bring it in. And then we'll also review at the same time, the last bit, the, the string concept where we're connecting the, the vision plan and master plans. That's going to be a much more brief section and I don't expect you would have as many comments about linguistically how I write it, but. There will be, it, it should be reviewed again. And then following that, if let's say you approve all those concepts, we, we feel like the worksheet. Is reflective of those goals, then I'll bring an actual. Essentially, the document that city council will review later to officially change the code. So I'll, I'll try to make it look exactly as if we're going to council then. And then you will make a recommendation to. Recommend these, this code language change to the Community Development Commission or Committee. And they will take it up and say, yes, thumbs up or thumbs down, make changes. They'll send it back to you guys. Or they'll adopt, they're not adopted at CD, but they will suggest sending it to council. And then council will adopt it. How quickly we go through each of these steps is a little bit of a pacing thing. I don't know. There's all sorts of hiccups that can happen in between now and that final date, but that is the stretch. That's the, the goal, the sightline. So we will. Kind of work through that. So my goal on this meeting wasn't necessarily to. You know, go, okay, tell me if this code language makes any sense, because I feel like it's a little much in. Earlier in your question, you asked if you had a copy of it and it should be part of the agenda packet.
Oh, okay.
Scroll further down. There's quite a few pages in this agenda packet. It should be just below the. Snowquami Trading Company signage stuff.
Okay, that's my bad.
No, no worries. It's, uh, so that it'll be just like that for the next meeting as well.
Got it.
Yep. And you'll see there's two sections, just like a staff report where I tried to outline the timeline, what's happened, why are we doing this? But I gave you the, you know, the. I said it instead of reading it from the document, but that will still be in there. And then the next following page is my preferred method, that worksheet. And then, yeah, following that, you'll see the, the next version of the worksheet, so to speak.
Awesome. Okay. Sorry, I missed that.
Good. So we'll take that and digest it, the new members and, and the whole commission. And yeah, I think come next week, we ought to be able to. Start working on getting across the finish line. I think we were, I think we're pretty close. I do think a new, a bunch of new sets of eyes on it right now. Is perfect. So. Good. Anything else, Dylan? Oh, sorry, Daryl.
So Dylan, got a curiosity. Is the document or the, can we edit this and or like put comments on it and send it back to you? Just so that you can like for quick little changes or do we have to do that inside of the commission, the committee?
The, well, you can't, it's a PDF that we share out as part of the agenda. So I don't know that it'd be very ideal for that.
Well, we can, we can send it around. We can send the word document around. So, so long as none of you send it to each other. That would be fine. So if you just make some comments, send it back to Dylan or Dylan and I, that would be perfectly fine. Okay, I just, there's a couple of little things that, I mean, maybe I'm.
Yeah.
That might be helpful. And the other thing is just out of curiosity, given the, the permit with that we reviewed or the. The building that we reviewed last time, is this. Going to extend to Maple?
It's, it would. Yeah, it's the historic district, which barely extends to Maple. Yeah.
It would just be half of the street of Maple, I'm assuming. Correct. The, the eastern half of Maple is the part that's within the historic district so that it would apply to that side, but not the other side.
Not the city hall side.
Yeah. I would say if there, if, you know, because we certainly talked about quite a bit of stuff related to the, the rails project, the, the large building and. Some of the issues identified in reviewing that project are, weren't really picked up as part of the historic downtown relook. As it was originally envisioned back in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So. You know, as I stated before, that would probably be a discussion worth having. I think. We'll have to get some thought to how best to facilitate that because I'm not, I'm not hundred percent sure it really fits within the context of. The historic, of the downtown relook that Dylan's been describing, but. Because we need to have the conversation, I, I think we, we need to figure out how to make that happen. Because it might best stand on its own as a separate thing, because the, the issues are related but not identical. That came up. So we definitely haven't lost that thread. Just, we're still giving it some thought internally right now.
Good, good. Okay, anything else on the, for this week on the downtown relook? Okay, so just to recap though, please forward any comments. Cause you, so we're going to get the word file and provide comments directly to Dylan and Jason. Do not send them to the other commissioners because we have to review those in this formal meeting, not, not offline. Okay. All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, the comprehensive plan docket and work plan.
Thank you. So let me. Grab my screen back up here. I need a, so I'm just getting to the right page in the PDF. That was not the right page. Sorry, type two hundred and seventy-seven, so twenty-seven, and there is no page two hundred and seventy-seven. So this is the memo and I apologize for the memo going out late. Oops, I need to turn. That off because I'm not sharing video anymore. So your call from the previous meeting, the planning commission approved the proposed work plan, which had a series of meetings to go through the. The docket request. So at this meeting, tonight, we'll go through docket request number one. This first request we're reviewing was, I'll make it a little bigger. In summary, was that development proposals should have secured water rights prior to approval. And so as I went, so what we did in the memo is we analyzed, what does the conference of plan say? About water rights, water supply, and then what does the city's municipal code say? Because we're trying to get a complete picture of what, where the city currently stands and then what. What could you do to change it? What, what might the effect be? So the land use element in section G talks about water rights. Actually, I should back up and note that first of all, the existing conference of plan dates was adopted in twenty fourteen. So it was done a little bit ago. At the time it was adopted, the city's then current and actually still current water system plan is the twenty thirteen water system plan. The city is currently in the middle of an update. We have a twenty twenty-one water system plan that has been. That the city council approved, sending to various state agencies for review. That review is ongoing and the plan is not fully approved yet. So we're, we're kind of in a, a bit of a weird zone right now with regard to. The city's water planning. But that said, the existing conference of plan talks about water rights. It specifically notes that, and it's, it's quoted here, substantial development of the mill site or the Snowquami Hills UGA urban growth area. Would require additional water rights to be secured by the city or private developers. In, in broad terms, the city's water supply is getting pretty close to max, maximized. There is still some extra space. And so we're not, we're not completely tapped out yet, but we couldn't, for example, fully develop the mill site without additional water supplies. We could not develop any of the UGA areas, but without additional water, just in, in very broad terms. The constant plan in the, in the vision and policy plan element, which is element number one. Has some policies I pulled out that also talk about water supply, water rights. So you can see the three of them here. I won't read them off. Because you can read it for yourself. They're in the, and they're in the memo. And, and then we can go through and look at what does the, the city's code require with regard to water supply for actual development projects? Because we have the conference of plan language, which is of course the policies and, and the general vision up, up here, then we have to implement it through the city's code. So we have the, we have a certificate of water availability. That's in the city's utilities. Section of, of the code. So that's SMC thirteen point twelve point zero two zero. Lack of available water would be caused to not issue a certificate. So there's that check right there. There's a specific requirement for short plats and subdivisions that. You have to have an adequate water supply. So you couldn't do a residential subdivision unless the city has available water and. And if you don't, you can't get a subdivision approval. That requirement is also in the code concerning mixed use final plan. So that's a really big thing, like Snowquami Ridge, one or two would be the main examples there. So all that said, in practice, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Verthur.
Yeah, just a question. You, you, you had mentioned that the water supply was really close to kind of hitting the, the threshold here. Are we at like ninety percent, eighty percent capacity?
It's hard to put, yeah, it's, it's hard to put a specific number because the city's water needs very seasonal, seasonally. In the summer, for example, we're pretty, you know. We can be pretty close to the limit on, on a, you know, hot summer day when people are watering things. Versus in the middle of the winter, we're not using very much water right now. So. And the other, and I'm, I'm trying to give you the best answer I can. I'm, I'm not trying to, to avoid the, the question here. The city's water rights and our, and our supply system are also somewhat complicated because we have. Two primary water supply sources. One is Canyon Springs, which is a, as the name says, it's a, it's. A spring fed supply from the North Fork of the Snowquami River, up beyond Ernie's Grove. That supply allows us to use the full annual entitlement, which is measured in acre feet. And we can use that annual entitlement twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. It was known as the instantaneous, you know, how many gallons per minute can we pull down the pipe? The other water supply is the one that we largely pull out of the city's north well field, which is several wells located north of the city's public works. Facility. Those pumps can draw out a lot of water in gallons per minute terms, but you can't run them all, all the time. Yeah, we don't have enough sufficient annual water right for those. So operationally, what we do is we rely on Canyon Springs to the largest. Extent possible and we use the well field to supplement in the higher demand periods of the year. We also have some issues with the way the city, city's water distribution system is set up. We have essentially effectively two systems that are conjoined at this point. We have the, if you will, the, the valley floor system. Which is fed directly from Canyon Springs and Snowquami Ridge, which was originally built to be served only from the well field. We obviously have a connection between them and we have adjusted how we operate it, but, but the, the inner tie between those two and our pumping capacity. Up the hill is a, is a constraint on how we can supply water up to in this point ridge. We also have, of course, irrigation demands from the, largely from the golf course, but also from, from some of the, the commercial business areas. Which. And I'm giving you the flavor of all these things. You can understand that it's difficult to say, are we at ninety percent or eighty percent? It's. It, it's close and, and we can make some operational changes and make some infrastructure improvements that would essentially extend. Our water supply a little further, make it, make it go further. So we're close, but we're not maxed out. It is about the best I can give you. I, I certainly know that on, on. A few years ago, on a, you know, on a peak, peak day, you know, a hot, dry, everybody's watering things day, we came pretty close to maxing out our system. You know, as far as our gallons per minute draw. So we're certainly aware of this and we, and, and we're constantly monitoring it. The. Council member Johnson's report in his councilly as a report mentioned, the while Warren agreement, that's one of the. The things that we need help with right now is, of course, because of our current. Staffing levels in the public works department, we're, we're down a couple of people and we do need some assistance with the water utility sometimes. So that's one, that's one of the reasons why we saw that go to the city council. So does that more or less answer your question?
It, it, it sounds like we're kind of at a peak at, at times and at other times we're okay. And it sounds like if we had some improvements in the infrastructure, we wouldn't be hitting the max. So that, that's what I was trying to understand. Is growth prohibited by these peaks that happen? Maybe it sounds like. A couple of weeks in the summer. But can be worked around if we have funding for some other infrastructure kind of activities. So. And I don't know how much that would cost or what that would mean, et cetera. But I was just trying to understand. You know, what, what the real limiters to growth here and from a water perspective. Thank you. Say, Commissioner Goodman?
Thanks. I'm, I'm just wondering, Jason, if you can explain a bit how this works. So the, the city, the city itself can. Is oversees the city's water supply. And it sounds like there's, you know, there's a, there's a finite amount of, of water to go around and, and we monitor how much is in use. So I'm wondering, you know, in terms of a certificate of water availability, is that? You know. How, how does it work in terms of, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't the case be that if somebody wanted to develop something? They would just ask the city if there was enough water or, and, and the city would be able to determine if there's enough water or is there some other? Some other process that happens where water can be drawn from elsewhere or how does that work? Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I under, I understand. It's there, there's kind of, there's a couple of approaches to that. One way is, yes, they can simply ask, do you have? Do we have enough water or not? So for a lot of infill type development, you know, if somebody wanted to knock down. An old house in the, in the historic district and build a new commercial building. You know, the new commercial business is likely going to use a little more water than the house did. It's going to use water at different times, most likely, but we can certainly say, yes, we have enough water to serve that. We, we're reserving a certain portion of our water supply, a certain number of ERUs, equivalent residential units is, is what it stands for. For things like that. So at, at a small level, we, we're well aware of how much development broadly speaking, we can accommodate for larger projects. Yeah, so hypothetically, somebody wants to come in and develops and annex and develops Snowquami Hills West. We know that we pretty much don't have any water to serve them. And so they could ask us, we would say, no, we don't. So. We would tell them, you need to go find water supply or help us find water supply. That's exact, and, and the memo goes on to talk about this. That's exactly what happened with Snowquami Ridge. We required the developer to go out and obtain and. Perfect a new water right and a new pumping distribution system for Snowquami Ridge. Because it was going to be in excess of what our, the city's current water supply could handle. So. So that's, that's the other side of the coin is we don't necessarily need to have water if the developer can go out and get some. Now, I will say obtaining new water rights is extremely difficult, especially in the. In the Snowquami Valley and there's other areas of the state where it's even more difficult. But if you've at all followed North Bend's. And Salawater Water Districts of goings on the last few years. There's a lot of concern about water temperature in the river and just quantity of water in the river, especially in the hot summer months. And so that is making it difficult to develop new, new water supply sources in the valley right now. There are some other approaches we're exploring with the Department of Ecology with regard to water, but those are going to take. Multiple years to, to work, work their way through the system. That give you what you?
Yeah, that's, that's super helpful. And I guess I'm wondering, you know, in the case of, and I, I think you talk about it a little bit here in the last paragraph, but. You know, in the Snowquami Ridge case, would, would, whatever, let, let's just say that they, you know, somebody finds a water supply. Does that then come under city, the city's jurisdiction or does that just operate on its own, you know? Without, without the city being involved?
Practically speaking, we would require that they hand everything over to the city. We're not particularly interested in having private water systems serving. Serving parts of the city for, for various reasons. It, it's easier to manage mostly, but also the, the various. It, it's easier to manage mostly, but also the, the various um state requirements with regard to water supply just make it much easier for us to deal with on our own.
Thank you.
I, I have a question, uh. Kind of a follow up. A, a few years ago, we spent months, probably over a year um approving. The Salish development and that was uh the, was when Muckleshoot owned it before Salish bought that land. And it was the uh hotel expansion and a pretty significant residential development. And we asked many, many times about the water supply and. The water was, the water rights were there for that development. And when that got purchased by Salish, um, I'm pretty sure we were told that those water rights then reverted to the city. So what, what happened to those? Were they just not developed or did we increase our water supply in the last three years?
Um, what we were doing is the same, per the terms of the, the development agreement for the Salish expansion project, they, that. Development had reserved water, uh, a water supply us, you know, since this development agreement was signed in two thousand and three or four. So we were holding those seven hundred or so ERUs and essentially we were treating them as already allocated. Even though, of course, that water wasn't actually being used because the Salish project didn't exist. So when the Snoqualmie Tribe purchased the project. Uh, you know, purchased the property in the Salish Lodge and. Abandoned the expansion project, those water, that, that reserved water capacity then uh became unreserved. And so it's now. Currently, pardon the pun, floating out there uh free for somebody to use. In practical terms, the next project coming down the, coming down is the Mills, the Snoqualmie Mill Project. And so if that would likely suck up the, the ERUs. What, what it, what it has done is it has made the, at least the first phase of the Snoqualmie Mill Project, assuming it gets approved, of course. Easier to handle from a water standpoint than it might otherwise have been. Gives, gives us a little more cushion, gives the project a little more cushion to say, yes, we can definitely accommodate it. Doesn't help phases two or three at all. Like I said, assuming it gets approved.
But Salish, um, when the Snoqualmie Tribe bought that and to stop that, that freed up seven hundred ERUs.
Approximately. I'd, I can go back and look up the number, but it, I recall it was about seven hundred ERUs worth of water.
Okay, I, I would like to know that, but uh I don't want to derail us any further if you could. Okay.
See, Commissioner Aleth has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Aleth.
Just to help me get a, a sense of scale uh, uh, on this problem. How many ERUs is the city of Snoqualmie's water site supply currently provide? And like, give me an example of, of what a largest customer might consume.
That is a great question that I don't actually have the answer to. I would, I would have to look it up. And I could certainly.
I'd be super impressed if you had it off the top of your head, but I, I did not expect you to be able to answer that. But I, I would just love that to be able to have any, a way of sort of wrapping my brain around the scope of this.
No, absolutely. Um, I can, I can, I do know where to look it up. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if I can find the draft twenty twenty one water system plan here. I can really quick. I'm looking, staring at my other screen, so I'm still listening.
Yeah, wh- while he's doing that, I mean, just as a, a comment, I remember I moved up from California back in twenty fourteen. And I, I was trying to do back the little calculations comparing the two. And it appeared to me that we allocate about twice as much water as uh say Silicon Valley, like the Bay Area. Now, that's, that's not saying a lot because Bay Area is really, really ratcheting it down to the point where. You might not be able to, you know, take two showers in a, in a household. So I don't know if that's a good comparison, but um it, it was surprising to me that. Um, with what appears to be ample supply of water, we, we pay a very close attention to it up here. So.
Yeah, I think, you know, when it comes to how much water is used per ERU, that's. In the long term, it's something that, you know, it, it, that's a different conversation. So far, we haven't, this city has not had to have significant conversations around essentially conservation. Um. Long term going forward, that's going to have to be a conversation, but we're not to that point yet. Um, you know, in California, they have those conversations out of necessity because their water supply, as you know, it is just much more limited. Um, and, and they have, of course, these, these big multi-year droughts that they have to contend with. That makes it that much more difficult to uh. To, for them to plan um and manage their, their water supply. So. So, yeah, I, I think conservation will be a part and, and as we can, you know, rack it down, how much water is being used um. In the city, that will help extend our supply even further. But for now, we're, we're just not there. Let's see here. Still loading. That's why I haven't gotten it up.
Could you scroll down on your document that we're seeing?
Sure. So anyway, so what's, what the memo goes through is, you know, I, I highlighted just as, for example, the, the specific conditions coming out of the Snoqualmie Rig mixed use final plan. Um, you know, it says, you know, Rayco Warehouses Real Estate for um arm. Had identified sources of water to supply Snoqualmie Ridge and they developed the, the North Well Field. Um, there's a further condition down here, you know, they have to demonstrate the availability prior to approving the, the plats or the other development approvals for non-residential development. And then this condition one thirty two says. They, Rayco had to construct the water infrastructure, including the well field. And then turn the well field and the associated water right over to the city. So it's something we, we directly did and we um. And um obviously we own the well field and the water right that goes with it today. So that's an example of how this even, you know, the conference of plan says what it says about. You, you need to have water. We have the water availability certificate. We have requirements for having water in place. But when it comes to these bigger picture land use approvals, we certainly have, have in the past and, and would likely continue to. Essentially conditionally approve something and say, look, you can do this, but you need to find the water first. And that puts it then on the developer to go out and find the water. Um, the issue we'd have and, and I'd go on to describe this is that. You know, the way Mr. Shields' request is written. To say that they have to secure the supply before they can even come in and apply. Would functionally make it impossible to continue development because nobody, either the city would have to. S- spend the time and money and effort to. Find and develop new water rights and new infrastructure for it without a developer being involved, meaning it's on the city's taxpayers ahead of time. Or the developer has to go do it, give it to the city and then apply for their permits and another developer can swoop in. So. Developers don't really like to do that. They like certainty.
Commissioner Tesman has a question.
Please, hopefully I'm not getting ahead of myself here, but a question for you, Jason, is. Uh, under, under the current process, right? I, I get what you're saying here. Like, it makes no sense for the city to basically incentivize. The burden of finding water for private development. I, I get that. Um. My question is. Under the current process. Would we, are we able to end up in a situation where uh? Let's just take the mill site, for example. As you said, phase one likely has no, water is likely not the constraint for phase one if it were to go forward. Right? But it, it likely is the constraint for phase two and phase three or one among many constraints. So my que, my question is, under the current process. Could the mill site or any other development occur? Not to plan, you know, twenty five percent of the master plan, fifty percent of the master plan. Could that be fully approved under the current process? And then they end up in a situation where the other half of that plan, you know, however many phases that might be. Ultimately can't come to fruition because the water supply isn't there because uh frankly, they're unlikely. Or will be incredibly challenged to find it going forward. Is, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it, it makes perfect sense. And I think the answer to your question is, yes, the city could, could certainly do that. Um, we could approve a, essentially a high level plan for, you can do this type of development, but you're, say, but you've got to. Hypothetically, you can build, say, three hundred new homes and then you got, and then you're stopping until more water shows up, even though we've approved you to build a thousand homes. And so the, those extra seven hundred homes would be sitting out there. Essentially approved, but waiting for water supply. So they couldn't go through, go any further through the process to actually apply for the subdivisions and the building permits and all those things. They'd just be stuck. Um, trying to, trying to find water. Yeah.
Jason, uh, just to add on to that, could you cover what happened with Snoqualmie Hills West? Because I remember seeing. Uh, pretty significant development plans and then it was like full stop, no water, not enough water. I mean, that's how I perceived it.
Yeah, um, about, was it four years ago now? I, I want to say. I think it's about four years ago, the, a, a group that had assembled. Most of the property owners in, in Snoqualmie Hills West approached the city and requested annexation. Um, only the city council can approve that. And so they made presentations, the, the, the group that is made presentations to the city council with their development concept. They had, and I don't remember the exact details because it's been too long. Um. But it was hu, it was hundreds of homes, a, a significant retirement living community up there. And one of the city council's main concerns then is we don't have water. You know, and, and there were other concerns too, you know, transportation being one of them. Uh, environmental impacts be, you know, just broadly speaking, being a huge one. And the council, the city council decided to reject their request to get annexed. Um, but because as an annexation request, the city was in a position where it's. The city council has full discretion to accept or reject annexation requests for essentially any reason or no reason, really. Um, so that was a pretty easy call at the time for the city council to say, look, this is not the right development at the right time because the city's plans were oriented around the Salish expansion and the mill site. Um, and we didn't have enough water for, even for the mill site full development at the time. Um, if you swing it around and, and assume for a second that Snoqualmie Hills West was already annexed, was already part of the city. Well, now, now you're, you end up in a situation where potentially they could. Again, this is a hypothetical, but the mill site and Snoqualmie Hills West could be in a race to see who could get a vested permanent application in first. And essentially grab the remainder of the city's available water supply. Um, that can't happen because Snoqualmie Hills West needs to go through annexation first.
Got it. Commissioner Tesman, you have more?
No, no, very helpful. Thank you, Jason.
Yeah.
So, so in summary, though, you're saying that the way um, the docket item was worded. Uh, would prevent even consideration development and you're thinking the wording ought to be um. Basically allowing the first step to be taken to allow the developer to come up with additional water sources, otherwise. Otherwise we're stuck. That sounds like the summary of what I heard.
Correct, that's correct. I, the, at the end of the day, the, the administration's recommendation here is that we, we don't need to adopt this amendment. To the conference of plan and subsequently to the city code.
Okay. As you also referenced, twenty thirteen and twenty twenty one, I believe, um, water plans. Has there been a significant change between the two in terms of amount of water that Snoqualmie has?
Um, there's only been a minor change in the amount of water available. What, what the, the city was able to do was to um. Essentially transfer a water right, um, the so-called deck wells that the city. Um, owns from, and those wells were located along three eighty fourth, somewhat close to Kimball Creek historically. Um, we were able to essentially transfer that right from the deck wells over to be utilized through, through the cities on north and south well fields. So what that did is it gave us a little bit of extra margin. Um, that was not a, a large, or rather, it is not a large water right. Um, but every little bit helps. Beyond that, um, you know. Various improvements that have been made over the, over the last eight years has certainly enabled us to operate the system a little more efficiently than we, than we could in twenty thirteen. The, the twenty thirteen plan was written at a time when the, as I mentioned before, the Snoqualmie Ridge and the valley, you know, the historic. Snoqualmie systems were operated largely independently. Um, that had to change as, as Snoqualmie Ridge re, closer build out and they, it required. Um, the city's water supply system to be used a little more intensively. And also just to better utilize the city's water, right? Because we have a, we, we can run Canyon Springs all the time. Um, whereas we can't with the well field, so.
I have to say, I'm surprised that. At peak of summer is, I mean, if you think about it, uh, it's been a couple of wet years, but the peak of summer. Peak use of summer, we are so close to being done that we ultimately are. Um, would probably need more water sources for any significant development. That's, that's a bit of a surprise to me.
Well, and I don't want to oversell it because, like I said, we're talking about, you know, peak of, peak of, peak. Situation that we can get pretty maxed out. Um, where we don't normally operate that way. And, and certainly. When you have issues with, with the peak, there's, there are things we can do to, to help mitigate that. Um, you know, and, and a lot of it's just infrastructure improvement. One of the, as I mentioned, one of the problems we have with the water system is our pumping capacity to pump water up the hill. From the valley floor to the very top of Snoqualmie Ridge is not what it. Is not what it needs to be, um, both in capacity and in the way we can actually, you know, just operate the pumps. So we, we have capital projects programmed to address that. Um. You know, just as one example. So that's one way we can do it. We've been looking a lot at how the golf course is irrigated is another thing we're looking at. Um, you know, we, we've done some work with the sewer plant to, to reclaim water, obviously. And that's, and that's a lot of what's used to irrigate the golf course, but we can take better advantage of that than we, than we have been historically. So there's a lot of things we can do to, to make our current supply go further and be more efficient with it that are, and a lot of those are underway. So I finally found that the, the city's existing water right. Is for two thousand three hundred seventy two acre feet per year. And we have, we are limited to three thousand three hundred twenty eight gallons per minute. Total. So um Canyon Springs is. Three, is three fifths of our annual right and the North Well Field is roughly half of our instantaneous. So, so that's where you can start to understand the, the imbalance there. We can run Canyon Springs twenty four seven three sixty five. We can't run the North Well Field that way.
What, what is an ERU though? I mean, how does this?
I'm, I'm trying to look that one up right now. One, by ERU. Sorry, this is a huge, this is a huge document. It's a seven hundred and thirty six page. This is the twenty twenty one draft plan I'm looking at.
Wh- wh- while you're looking that up, I mean, we've got this item on the agenda as uh discussion only. Um, i- is there any other questions from the commissioners on education at this point?
I, what, Jason, y- you know, you, 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 I forgot the gentleman's name who, who proposes, but what is? What is the crux of, of why he proposes? Why, why did he believe this would be beneficial, given what you've outlined are the negatives?
Um, well, Mr. Shields not here to speak to it, so I, and I, I certainly don't want to put words in his mouth. Um, I, I think, I think it comes from a couple of places. I think one is, is a concern over, over, over drawing the city's. Water rights, first of all. The second is a concern about the scale and pace of development in Snoqualmie and in the Snoqualmie Valley more broadly. Um. But again, I, I would, I would prefer to let him really speak to it himself to, to give his, to, you know, to give the background on why he made the request. Um, you know, and, and, and part of the reason I recommend that the commission discuss this is because. It, it's a worthwhile discussion to have about growth and development and water supply. Um, and also, as you're seeing, it provides an opportunity to at least provide some education, education on. What, what is the city's water supply and how is it operated and managed? You know, at least from a, you know, thirty thousand foot level perspective.
Right.
So according to this, the city's. Let's see, so as of twenty seventeen, the city's equivalent residential units citywide was about. What is this? Eight thousand ERUs citywide. And the maximum day demand in, this is in twenty seventeen, was about twenty seven hundred gallons per minute, give or take. And then it looks like we max out at about, what is that? Ten and a half thousand ERUs. So I I think the city is probably closer to, what is that, 9,000 ERUs currently in, well, not that many. It's still about 8,000 ERUs currently in service. So so from an ERU standpoint, we're roughly 80%.
Right, right. That's good. That's actually good education. And I wanted to ask you, you kind of mentioned this, but the golf course. For anybody who sees it, I mean, it uses an enormous amount of water. Is that fresh water or gray water?
It's both. A lot of it is gray water, but we are mixing in potable water, especially at certain times of the year.
How much say do we have on how much gray water versus fresh water they could use?
Technically, a lot of say. The way the agreements are written, we could, in fact, I believe, require them to use nothing but gray water. That would require some changes to how the system is plumbed. So implementing that is not an easy thing, and we, of course, also want to be good neighbors to the golf course and not just, you know, cut them off of potable water supply for irrigation purposes all at once. Ideally, we would be able to ramp them down over a period of years. You know.
When you said 8,000 ERU of, I assume that's fresh water, was the golf course kind of that?
Oh, yes.
It'd be interesting to know how much the golf course consumes of fresh water. And I'm not anti-golf course or anything. I just, I mean, just from observation, it uses an amazing amount of water.
Yeah.
In the interest of transparency, I assume the golf course was the largest consumer, given the context, but that's why I asked, what's the largest consumer?
Yeah.
Because maybe I'm surprised. Maybe it's the school district. I have no idea.
No, I I think on an annual basis, the golf course is the largest consumer, but of course, most of their water demand would be in the in the spring, you know, spring through fall. And they would have not that very little, if any, demand over the winter, which of course mirrors a lot of other water use. So I I would be surprised if they were not the largest water user in the city.
But we don't really have a sense for how much our our largest users consume. And and the reason I'm picking at this, I'm just trying to get a sense of scale again, right? It's not that, again, I I care how much water the golf course uses, but it it gives me a sense for like how much capacity we have available when working with an individual large consumer.
Yeah, no, and and certainly we we do know, because of course, we we have all the meter data, so the the information exists. I know the public works department has it. I'm just not, you know, I I don't know. I don't know off the top of my head, and I don't know if the the system plan necessarily goes into that level of detail for privacy reasons. I can tell you from the 2021 water system plan, it's showing a total average annual consumption in 2017 of 550 million gallons, give or take. Of that, it's showing about 310 million used by single-family residential, another 13 and a half million by multifamily residential, 55 or so million by commercial, 123 million by irrigation. And then public consumption, 27 million, and other quote unquote is about 22 million. So again, I I think the irrigation, you know, the irrigation of the golf course is almost certainly going to be the single biggest consumer, but you know, as you would expect, because we have so many homes in Snoqualmie, that that single-family residential is the the largest consumer by by type.
Right. Roll those numbers you gave, freshwater?
Yeah, that's the, well, that this is, this is, this is table four dash one in the 2021 water system plan, and it's titled average annual metered consumption in service connections. So I couldn't.
Yeah.
So it's probably freshwater, but.
How much? How much opportunity there is for gray water? I mean, if we're saying we're development limited due to water, it'd just be interesting to know. And and it may be, you know, something that would take 10 years to even phase something in, but it would be interesting to know.
Yeah.
How much gray water are you using?
Here, I can actually tell you, this is, this is the 2017 largest water. It's actually in the table. This, I should, sorry, it's on my other screen that I can't put on Zoom here. I should pull it up so you can see it. The largest, the largest user of potable water in 2017 was the Salish Lodge Spa. They use 7.9 million gallons. And then number two was Puget Sound Energy at their facility up on Douglas Street. The city was the next two largest users. Well, be because we have, the city has to use water for various things, so number three is it's the address is the the wastewater facility. And then number four is, it looks like Centennial Field, but you know, some of these are because the the city to maintain the system, we we have to flush things. Sometimes we have to, you know, fill fill the various holding tanks for fire reasons, et cetera, et cetera. You know, the hospitals are up in the top 10. The school district is is up there as well. A couple of their facilities are using quite a bit of water, you know, which which would you would expect.
Could you provide a link to that information with the?
Yeah, I'm actually going to try to dig it, dig it up on the document center right now, so you can all see the link and I can send it around as well. Sorry, because I have I have a giant screen over over here that I can look at and some of my my little, you know, 13 inch laptop screen right in front of me, so I like to look at things over over there where it's bigger and easier to read. Let's see, drinking water, water system.
Well, this docket item is educational in terms of the quantity of water. I mean, yeah, that's that's very interesting.
So sorry, this document is going to take a while to load, so I'll screen share when it comes up. While we're waiting, are there any other other questions?
I have a question, Jason, on kind of legalities. If I wanted to have a conversation with Mr. Shield, am I allowed to do that?
Um, yeah. There's nothing against, this is what's known as a legislative item. And so to to an extent, a lot of things are okay for legislative items. In general, we'd ask that you share whatever you talk to him about, you know, back to the commission and 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 I'll I'll reach out to Mr. Shield again as well to invite him to attend the meeting so that he can speak to the requests itself. I I know it's been helpful as we kind of started this process, and I think it would continue to be helpful since he's the one who proposed it.
Agreed. Thank you.
Sorry, it's a giant document, so it is taking forever to load. It's about three quarters of the way now.
Actually, while we're waiting, any update on Mill Site?
Yes, I can tell you that the the final EIS was appealed by the Snoqualmie County Action Network Group. And so because of that, the appeal of the FEIS and the project review itself will instead be going to the hearing examiner and so the planning commission, so you all will not have to worry about it. We don't have a hearing date for for that set yet. We have a pre-hearing conference with the hearing examiner coming up to set that schedule. But we assume it will be moving through the here, through the the hearing process here over the next couple of months.
Is that a separate meeting or is that during a council meeting?
No, it'll be separate. The what will happen is the hearing exam will schedule a hearing in front of the hearing examiner, and that will be, I don't know what time that will be scheduled. Likely, it'll be scheduled over a period of multiple days because this, of course, is a substantial project. It's an open public meeting. We'll, it'll be on Zoom. We'll publish the Zoom link, you know, put notices out, et cetera, et cetera. The hearing examiner is going to, you know, we'll hear from the project applicant, we'll hear from the 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 appellants, the people who appealed the EIS, we'll hear from the city. As to, so the first part is talking about what's what's called the adequacy of the EIS. Did did the EIS appropriately analyze all the environmental impacts and and identify needed mitigations? Did it, did the EIS respond to all the public comments appropriately? That's kind of what i- in broad terms, the hearing examiner is looking for. And then the hearing examiner will also do, so you recall what the planning mission went through for the Salish Expansion Project. You know, you, the planning mission heard the presentations, reviewed the whole project and made a recommendation to the city council. In this case, the hearing examiner will will do that instead, so they'll, again, hear from the project applicant, they'll hear from the city, they'll hear from anybody who wants to comment. And, you know, whether they're opposed or in support, and and the hearing examiner will then have to make a written recommendation to the city council and whether the project should be approved, and if so, with what conditions. And then the city council will get it to make a final decision. So here, let me, it's finally loaded, so let me pull this up now.
Did, was the finalized EIS published?
Yes, toward the, in the middle of December.
Oh, that's some light reading I need to do.
Yep, it's, I don't have my paper copy sitting here, but it's huge.
Yeah, I know.
This is in the document center, huh?
Yes. So links up to, I'll I'll email this to everybody, so you don't have to hunt it down in the document center. But I figure I could at least show you. So this is, again, this is in 2017. So something certainly could have changed. My assumption here is that this looks like it is just potable water supply and not, does not include irrigation.
It's funny that we get the car wash in there. You think that's interesting.
Yeah. I mean, you can also see, though, you know, once, once you get down to about here, you know, we're below 2 million annual gallons, and and a lot of these uses are all pretty close. You know, the the really, really big ones are the, just these, these few up here, you know, all around 5 million gallons annually or above.
Yeah. They split the school on two, and they're different numbers. I assume those are.
Two separate, almost certainly, it's two separate meters.
Yeah.
Yeah, 399.
Oh, sorry. Family Investment, what is that?
Uh, let's see, about 34935 Southeast Douglas. Let me tell you which building that is. That is it's the one that it's two buildings down on the right from the police station, so that's lot three of the business park, and it's the it it's just a, it's one of the.
It's an office building.
Yeah, it's a industrial, you know, tilt, concrete tilt up office building. But but they have, let's see, which, what uses in there? Oh, that is, what's the? Shoot, I should remember this because I just, I was talking to them a couple of years ago about a permit.
It was the old Sonicare site, correct?
Yes, but they had something else.
Sonicare? That was Space Labs. Well, it used to be Sonicare if you're looking at that.
Yeah, it's no longer.
It's no longer Sonic. I mean, Sonicare moved all the way up to Bothell, right? But they sold the building.
Yeah.
They owned it outright, which was. It's the Snoqualmie Ridge Town Center. Is that all the residential? Or just the Center Street?
Let's see, which one it's. Oh, 7730 Center Boulevard, that's the the IGA building.
Of course, this is five years old.
This could.
Yeah. Right, right. So we don't have the the Ridge Residential use.
No, that because thi- this is showing, as you can kind of tell, individual meters effectively. So that, so that's why, for example, the school district is showing up twice because they have two meters. This is the high school.
Right, okay.
It it's two separate meters for whatever reason that you know, maybe one meter is their irrigation, the other one is their actual building, or it just could be that because of the way the building was built over a period of years, that's just the way it is.
And that's for the old building, not the new one, too.
Yeah. See here. I'm looking for my recollection on what's going on.
So you're going to send this to Doc, Jason?
Yeah, I'm going to email you guys the link to this.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So you have that. Let me see here. And I'll find, I'm sure I'm going to find it the second we log off tonight. What exactly uses in is in lot three in the business park? I just.
Okay.
Not for life. It's one of those things where I I'm I'm sitting, you know, looking through my emails, and now I'm digging up building, building permit records.
Yeah, no, no, fair enough, fair enough. I mean, go ahead and send this to us, and let me ask the commission, any other?
Microconex, there we go. That's why they use so much water.
Okay.
Because because the the products they they need to require, their manufacturing process requires a whole bunch of water to rinse things and and cool things and that, all that.
Okay. So any other questions from the commissioners regarding the docket plan item one? No? Okay. Well, good discussion. Real good discussion, and I look forward to getting that, the document on the water use. So I think, you know, I think the commission will have all the data they need then on that item. So moving on the agenda item, unless there's anything else on that point, Jason, are we good?
Nope, that is it.
So follow up on previous items of interest. I remember pulling everybody, and I don't recall any previous items of interest. So let me move on to new items of interest. Commissioner Alef, since I've missed your name at least four times, let me start with you.
Perfect this time now, so that's awesome.
I'm working on it, yeah.
Good job. I I just had to follow up. Tomorrow will be three months kind of on the job here. And kind of the basics I still haven't received from the city, that would be, you know, any orientation as a commissioner, IT setup, et cetera. I wanted to mention it here because I I I think things are a little backlog. The three months seem a little extreme.
I can answer that, Commissioner Alef. I have received our IT ticket person has been out on surgical leave, and so I actually received today, and I was going to touch on this later for Mr. Commissioner Testman, yourself and Commissioner Mather, I will be sending you welcome packages, and you have had your city emails created for you, so from now on, I will be sending these things to your city emails. And so I will send you your welcome packet. I think they just kind of got overlooked for a little bit. So.
We are in a pandemic.
Yeah. Anyway, so, yeah, I was, I just wanted to update you on that. So I have, I have your city email account set up. I will forward you your welcome packets with instructions on how to access your accounts.
Some some additional training opportunities on the Open Public Meetings Act and the Public Records Act and and related things are on the radar of the city clerk and the city attorney, so we're definitely planning to do that. It just hasn't been set up yet. I know the city clerk had sent emails around about open government training that's required. However, I don't know if you all got that because of the 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 IT issues Quinn was just talking about. So we'll make sure, we we can, we can have some further correspondence offline about that, but we're definitely going to work on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alef, anything else?
That was it?
Good. No specific order here. Commissioner Testman?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Goodman?
Not for me, thanks.
Commissioner Smith? Nothing here. Commissioner Lambert?
Nothing here.
Christopher Mather, am I saying it right?
Yeah, Mather's perfect. Yeah, nothing from my side. Thank you.
Okay. For myself, just a question again on the unoccupied area of IGA. Sounded like a couple of months ago, there was potential there. So any anything going on there?
Yes, the proposed daycare use is still moving through the process. They're currently working through their, they're building permit comments and silver review on redesigning the parking lot a little bit. So it's coming, but it's not, it's not ready yet.
I'm sorry, I know I said no, but can I ask, whatever happened with the woodman? Whatever happened with the woodman?
It's it's not coming back.
All right.
Is the best, the only answer I have right now. The future, I I don't know what the future is going to hold for that for the space, but the the woodman as we knew it is defunct now.
Did it change ownership?
No, but the the woodman was closed throughout the pandemic, of course, and. After this length of time, the the owner has determined that. Essentially, going through to try to reopen is just prohibitive between trying to staff up and. And and deal with the with the current labor market, the supply chain issues, you know, all these things combined, just he it's, he's decided he's he's done.
Wow, what a shame.
So, yeah, it is. So I, no future plans for it as of yet. But that's where that's where it sits.
No. And final thing, King Street Lot?
The the. The. Segillo Sellers is not, has certainly not abandoned the project, but it's unlikely to happen in twenty twenty two.
Okay. Okay. That's all I've got. So upcoming schedule, Jason?
Sure, so. This point, the we're anticipating the meeting that would that would be scheduled for February twenty second, which would be a Tuesday because of the holiday will will be canceled. So don't plan on showing up that night. We'll resume on March seventh. And at that meeting, we anticipate having the downtown relook and continued docket discussion at that one. There could be, you know, a design review board item that comes in, but we, at the moment, we don't have any, so.
Good. Good. All right, a good full meeting at this point. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Got a second? All in favor?
I.
All right, thank you all. Meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night.